...amount of money that we're spending for part-time services if we could do it with full-time legal counsel for less money, it's something that we need to consider and that we need to look at. And so, I appreciate the information that Mr. Mullins, Superintendent, put together for us on some of the figures. And, you know, when we look at not just our contract with Mr. Bradshaw, but when we look at our legal expenses, that's the picture we have to see. We have to look at the entirety of our legal expenses, which last year was almost $200,000. And 142, almost 143, I'm trying to get my future, $143,000 to Mr. Bradshaw and his firm. So, I just, I had looked at the contract, I've looked at some things I think we could do better on, we could negotiate some things. We're paying $30,000 for a retainer fee, $2,500 a month, that is paid for retainer, for legal matters at the board meetings, and also for some other items covered on number two on the contract. But things like routine discussions and inquiries with board members and school administrators, I would like to see better defined. I notice on the bill, there's times where there are a lot of telephone conferences with administrators that are billed for. And so, you know, I was, you know, wanted some better definition of that going in. I also have an issue with paying an hourly rate for training. We have a contracted attorney who I believe it's his obligation to be trained and not to bill the board to go to a conference. And I just, I really, that's probably one of my big things I get hung up on is that, you know, we're paying an hourly rate to go to a conference and looking at that, it's in the neighborhood of, if Mr. Bradshaw goes to four conferences, actually, there's six conferences he could go to in the contract, we could, you know, we'll look at over $10,000 a year to go to conferences. So, I think the least we should look at is, you know, to either include that in the retainer, that that would be costs that this board would not have to endure, or have some type of hourly, an hourly charge for training. I mean, we all have been to conferences, we all know what it's like, we go to professional conferences, it's very beneficial, but I can't really say it's like being at work. The value adjustment board attorney has sent them on the value adjustment board, he's a contracted attorney and we don't pay, the county doesn't pay for his training. As a matter of fact, he said that that's his obligation to be trained and to be up on laws, and so, we don't pay, the county does not pay for that training. So, I think that we should, you know, look at this contract in order to reduce our costs. There are some, some small things we could do, but I think we also have to have the discussion at what amount of money, when we get to a certain amount of money, do we say, hey, this is where we need to look at a full-time staff attorney who could obviously work in a lot of other areas. And I mentioned some of this at the last meeting, we were talking about this, but risk management, planning and development, negotiations, those are all things that a full-time staff attorney could work on, and it could feasibly be less than what we're paying for a part-time attorney. And so, I think it's wise for us to look at our options and to consider those costs. So, those are some of the things that I would like to discuss. I mean, I think the minimum, you know, we should look at moving, you know, those training costs that we pay for into the retainer. I also would rather see a set rate of $200 an hour, that's what other agencies, I mean, Mr. Bradshaw, that's this hourly rate from the sheriff's office, I think you said that's the hourly rate you charged for Suntory County when you did their investigation for the school board, it was $200. And so, you know, I understand previous boards had two, two set figures in the contract, and that was increased this last year. But I, those are the issues that I have. I mean, and I, you know, I've talked to the superintendent and staff some, but those are the ideas that I bring to this board because Mr. Bradshaw does work for the board. When we look at the other firms that we have that are involved with our legal expenses, we have Sniff and Spelman, and we have Thomas Ismore Gonzalez, and, you know, so there, those add to our expenses as well. Just because we would have a full-time attorney though, doesn't mean we wouldn't have outside contracted attorneys that would handle specialized cases, just like in this matter. Mr. Bradshaw, I guess, doesn't handle federal lawsuits, ESE mainly. In our talk that we had, Wes, you'd said that you had something that you, you know, contract out, and then also personnel issues and HR issues.
I do handle personnel issues and HR issues, but we do have Mr. Gonzalez who specializes in employment law, and sometimes my advice is, this is something we call Mr. Gonzalez about because there's certain aspects of employment law that get very complicated, and that is a big litigation, you know, suing people in employment law, so a lot of times I will refer them down to Mr. Gonzalez, you know, to provide a clarification for that. But one thing I do want to, to bring to the board's attention too, though, and then way back, I looked through some of my bills, and, you know, and in this last year, and just so the board knows, that, I mean, you want to say $143,328.49, that is not just my fees, okay? Last year, when the federal lawsuit started, the first $4,000, roughly $4,700 fee that came from Sniff and Spelman, I paid out of my firm account until they can set up their PO, so where they can start billing, you know, straight off. I've paid out of my account $3,245 for the court reporter fees to transcribe the transcription for the due process hearing that was held for that, and then some of the other things were related to, you know, so I pay those expenses, and we have an attorney that comes and sits and represents the board when we are doing an expulsion hearing, or we are doing a teacher termination hearing, or a teacher disciplinary hearing. They send that bill to me, and then I write them a check, and then I go to the board back for that. So, that is not, that amount is not wholly reflective of my time because there are expenses like that that I pay that I front for the school district, simply because 10 years ago I was told that's how it was done. And it doesn't bother me to do that because it seems ironic, or, or not ironic, but a hassle at this point I get, you know, if Mr. Carney comes and sits here and charges $1,200 or whatever to make him go through the process of establishing a purchase order, and for him to get paid, and I just add it on as an expense, as an expense to my bill. The other thing I'd like the board to be cognizant of, and y'all can do what you want, I mean, it's up to you, but, you know, you have to realize that some years are more, some years are less, and it depends on what is going on. You know, we had a full-blown due process hearing on a teacher termination, you know, in regards to the star testing law. We've had a teacher disciplinary hearing, we've had a federal lawsuit, and two other delegate hearings. Obviously, when those things happen, you know, if you're not involved in it, those generate more hours than just the routine things that happen, you know, throughout the school district and they take up the time. So, I just wanted the board to be aware of that. Yes, sir. That's all.
I was just going to say that if you're an attorney, and part of your responsibility with the school board, it seems like it would be to our advantage for the attorney to go to train, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I agree that the attorney needs to be up on the school law, but does that mean it's our responsibility to pay $200 an hour, go to a conference for training? I don't, in my view, I don't think it is. I think that it's, it would be considered a part of the $30,000 we're paying to him a year for the retainer, whoever that attorney is, if we have a contracted attorney. Again, this is not a personal issue. This is an issue that deals with costs and savings and service in a more demanding area that we could fit into some other areas here with the school board. So, those are the things I'm looking at. You know, I was thinking a little bit, what cost do we get up to that would be beneficial, you know, I mean, and I told, when I talked to Mr. Bradshaw, I said, you know, when I look at, at bills over $120,000, you know, that's what gets me thinking. Now, one of the years in '12, '13, the bill was $96,000. You know, we had 126, 142, 124, last year, 143, but I think last year was, partially the year was when the rates went up from 175 to 200, 200, and 225. So, you know, there's some, there's some, some things there that we're looking at because we, Mr. Bradshaw renegotiated an increase in the contract. So, you know, I just, I've spoken and researched on some couple districts, I know Mr. Kennedy sent us an article about some things too that I hadn't seen, and, you know, the, the one district that I spoke to had a staff attorney that was basically paid $50 an hour, $104,000 for the year, was for salary. And so, those are things that, you know, that was for a full-time person, and I just, I want to look at, when we look at all the activities that go on in negotiations, risk management, we look at ESE that continues to become more demanding, and Mr. Bradshaw, I think you would agree with that. As far as ESE laws, you know, it's, it's going to continue to probably be issues, you know.
Well, yes, I mean, just like all other areas in the school law, which is why I go to those conferences, because the amount of knowledge that I do, it's not just, you know, one area of law, school law does not constitute just one slimmer of law. You deal with the ADA, the IDA, the OCR, you know, Florida Education, the Florida Administrator Attorney, it is, it is so vast. I would just say this to the board, if you want inside counsel, it's your choice, if you want to stay outside, that's fine. I don't think you can hire inside counsel and have them do everything efficiently for a school board. There are certain areas that are, oh, you're going to have to hire outside counsel because that person's going to lack the expertise. The smart person knows when you don't have the expertise, they can say, okay, I need to hire somebody outside the school district. So, when things get into areas that I'm not comfortable with, I'm not afraid to pull trigger, get somebody in there, because my job first and foremost is to protect the school board, the superintendent, staff, and students of the school district. And that means we need to hire outside counsel, then we need to hire outside counsel. So, I don't know. Maybe that I can think of off the top of my head, three or four school districts that don't hire outside counsel very much, at your Broward, the line in the game, where they have 10, 12, 15 attorneys there, that they have somebody to handle, they're also there, they have somebody who knows nothing about the local conflict, they have somebody who knows nothing about their, you know, negligence claims, you know. So, those bigger districts, that they've grown and, I don't know what level, you know, you want to go inside or outside, but, you know, I can tell you from my experience with MSBA, A, is that, you know, there are more smaller school districts, the union-sized school districts that have outside counsel, inside counsel, and you still have to hire outside attorneys, and Broward still hires outside attorneys, and I think they're so much broader, I think, so probably that's.
Um, I, I did share with you, and I'm going to pass it out again, because I think you all should have it for the record, and I do want it in the record. This is from the Florida School Association, they have, have wrested with this issue under districts, so we're not having to create, recreate the wheel.
And we have two, the past week.
And we've had this, and I can remember even when I was just getting onto the board, Mr. Murray had, had done this same research. This is to, this was done in December, this was done by a very reputable firm that's well-respected in Florida, and it also includes on it a study by Estambia County referring to this very issue, and I'm referring to the, to the bigger issue here of whether to do inside or outside counsel. They, they wrestled with this, and if Citrus County were to consider doing inside counsel, we would be, with the exception of Flagler County, the smallest county in the state of Florida to have inside counsel among school boards that were looked at. Most of the time, the school boards are near 30,000 pupils before they're looking at it. But there was some important cautioning that was done in this particular study that the Florida School Board Association looked at, and in this, it says, to the salary, you'll add the labor, and first of all, what they talk about is that pretty much you're going to be spending about $150,000 for a base salary for a competent, and that was one of the things that they were concerned with, is you're not going to, if you're looking to just get some kid out of law school, you're going to find somebody for $50 an hour, but if you're looking for someone who is competent, then you're going to be paying in the $150,000 salary. And to that, you're going to have to add, they said, the labor burden rate, which is approximately 40% for governmental benefits. You're going to have to add to that the additional allocations of technology resources, dues, continuing education, compensation for paralegal assistance, and those alone, they think, not including what I just mentioned, but just the paralegal, is going to run another $45,000 to $70,000. And in addition, probably one of the things that they cautioned was to say, do not assume that you're going to have a senior district secretary who can adequately perform the legal work required, assuming the in-house counsel is performing serious legal work and litigations.
That's just what the question, because you brought up the paralegal, and it's sort of, now, do you use a paralegal? Like, is that, uh... Do you bill us for paralegal, you, you bill us your hourly rate for, or does, does paralegal do work that you bill us for? Okay, so you're not using a paralegal for this work, work right now?
Well, I do, I do, but I mean, so, when you ask, do I bill you for work on a paralegal? That's no, I do not.
You pay that personnel fee?
It's part of your expense.
It's part of my expenses, correct.
So, you do...
Now, now, I can tell you that, like, if there is a standard contract or something like that, I may mark it up and say, here, do that, and then review it, I'll bill for the review of it and make sure that everything is correct, running off over time.
One of the things is looking through the invoices, and I, and I appreciate, Mr. Dodd, your, your concern of the legal costs, but I can tell you, because I was here during some of the years, particularly in the year where it was 90,000, 96,000 wasn't quite 100,000, we had very little legal things going on in that year. It was one of those years, knock on wood, where we didn't have a whole lot, but like a year like we've had this last year, and it has nothing to do with what Mr. Bradshaw's doing, that has to do with what, what just comes in. And we have a scalability right now where we occasionally benefit by a year like we did in 2002, 2003, but when we have years like we had now, we still don't have to bear the cost of creating a new level, and it really would be a new layer of operational cost. There, we would be one of the only districts of our size and nature to add that new layer of operational cost. The Florida School Board Association is certainly saying they wouldn't be recommending that based on their research. I don't know why we would recreate the wheel and go through that. I understand you've got some concerns about maybe some specific billables. I know Ms. Verderami has talked about, there is a number of times she calls Mr. Bradshaw or the office is due, and they don't get billed for it. I talk to Mr. Bradshaw very regularly about business here, I have never seen a bill come through for it. It is, in business, something that we very regularly deal with, where if, if I can look at everything that I was charged from an attorney, I'm often surprised at the stuff I'm not charged in my legal bills. So, yes, there's times where you go, really? I didn't realize that that, we were getting charged for that, but there's also a great deal that isn't. But the difference is, is those things aren't on a bill, because it would frankly take more time to show that they were on, not on a bill. With regards though, to the issue of, of our continuing education paying in, we're an educational board. We expect our teachers to go to seminars, we encourage them to, and we don't take their salary away when they go.
Do we pay their hourly rate during the summers?
If they go to a seminar during the school year, or they go to things, we don't deduct that from them.
What, no, but what about during, what about during the summer?
If they go during the summer, but there, there are times where they, that the administrators are away doing that, I don't recall that we deduct that from them.
Well, those are full-time employees, Mr. Gonzalez, those are...
Absolutely, but the difference is, that's actually costing us more. If he was a, if he was a full-time employee, he would, it would, or if we had an in-house employee, it would cost us more, and we'd still be paying it.
I would probably stay back the time that we did, I would try to persuade, let's just be a full-time attorney, it was that year that it seemed like anytime we walk out the door, someone was suing us for something or threatening us, so it's, so I just pictured my, my career in the portal, all day, every day, and so I tried to persuade, let's, you know, each month full-time, you know, what you talk with somebody, and try and get the board to do that. Well, that was an odd year, just like that low year was an odd year, it's not normal every year for that thing, that type of intensity to occur, but that's the last time we investigated.
And interestingly, in the evaluation that Estambia County just did, everyone's, every district survey said that they use outside counsel. We have a very scalable operation with our contracted Mr. Bradshaw, and it's a contract that predates Mr. Bradshaw, it goes back to Mr. Fitzpatrick. If you're not aware too, Mr. Bradshaw, I, I don't recall what you're on right now, but you're not just getting trained there, but you also represent the district as a, on the board of the Florida School Board's Attorney Association.
I was, yeah, I'm treasurer.
You're treasurer.
So, this is an association that not only has Citrus County had a, a relationship with of, of respect, their highest award for the association is the, is the Richard Spike Fitzpatrick Award that is given in honor of the Citrus County Board of Attorney for, for his work. This is an organization that isn't just any type of professional development, this is, this is the gold standard of what we expect from our attorney. And given the fact that he is, has a scalable situation, I've been here on the board where I know, we had a previous board member, that one of the reasons the rates went up was because they wanted, we wanted him here more often, and so, the rate was adjusted upward. He didn't ask for that at the time, we were the ones that demanded, wanted a higher level of service, and said we wanted him here during, during other meetings, and he said, fine, I just need to be, you know, paid for that, as anyone would if they're doing that. I, I think that the, in this letter, there's, there's a sentence here that I think sums most of this up. "I suggest that if a district has adequate representation," which I believe we do, "using outside counsel, there is no reason to change unless there is some political or cultural imperative to grow an inside counsel legal department." I don't believe we have that, and I cannot see how it will financially or service benefit this district right now.
You tell us, you know, you make a decision about hiring Wes, who will pick others, and others, other candidates who are very good attorneys, but you look at Wes, Wes knows Citrus County, and you're much more comfortable with someone who knows what you're serving, knows the people, knows the people, and knows people who are safe, rather than someone you just hired, because they're very good, but they're on different channels.
And I wasn't here, but I understand you guys did say you wanted someone that understood the culture of Citrus County.
Exactly. And also, I blame people, which he wants to make sure he goes on to conferences, and I, and we would do it, you know, I know that, but I was very concerned with it, that we had our attorney going to these conferences, learning about things that were coming up in law, and most support, we have to talk with all the other people and see what's happened in those towns, and I know Wes, Wes does that, someone else is my guy.
Well, for $200 an hour though, that's, that's, to go to a conference, that's, that's a pretty good pay.
Mr. Dodd, that, that, the way you say that, it doesn't come across well. When you make that comment, this has been a relationship we've had for 10 years with our attorney, and you're, you're just implying that the only reason he would ever go to it was to, to be paid, and if he didn't get paid, then there's really no reason for him to do that.
Sometimes I think sometimes people, it's accurate, that sometimes a group pays for the, the fees to go to the conference, and I pay for the gas, and that's it, but they don't pay per, a per-hour rate, so maybe what Mr. Dodd was talking about is, okay, good with paying for the, the registration, but per hour, maybe there should be some compromise on that.
That's, well, I would accept that, I mean, I, I think it should be in the retainer. I'm not talking about the expense paid, you pay for the hotel room, pay for the mileage, pay for his meals like we do now, but that this $30,000 a year you pay in a retainer fee for one board meeting a month, not the workshops, a board meeting.
Special meetings, awesome.
Special meetings, board meetings, and when...
Plus the agenda, well, I can, I mean, I don't need to interrupt.
No, I, no, you can interrupt.
But it was the special meetings, the agenda reviews, and it was a few other things that they, that they want to contain in the retainer, and that's, so this is what we do.
Right.
So, $1,500 would be $2,500, but you got to do these things.
And that, well, I, because I was here when that took place. Right, so, so, so it was at one time $1,500, now we've raised it to $2,500.
At this board's request.
And, and then it was raised last year, but the hourly, hourly rate was raised, so how, where was the savings then? Could you explain, because I wasn't on that board, how was the...
Are you looking for the fact that we had an increase, though, and we also had an increase in, in what we were having him do and in the work, so I'm not sure where, if you're looking for savings, you're also got to understand there was a different layer and level of work that we're talking about.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying, from the previous board that raised the retainer from $1,500 a month, $2,500 a month, there was extra work.
They had it more, yeah.
And, and do you remember what that was?
Well, it was, it was more, it was more board meetings, it was, there, there was a number of things, and it was by a previous board member who desired to make sure that there was, there was a greater exposure of legal representation. Okay, I, I have to ask, as it keeps coming up, Mr. Bradshaw, am I misunderstanding, are you spending most of your weekends at professional development? Because I don't recall seeing in the billing, so, so how many times a year are we go, are, are we paying?
Before Florida School Attorney Association conferences a year, I don't bill for my time driving down, coming back, anything else, I bill for the time, I bill for the time while I'm there during the conference.
Are we saying it's an eight-hour day? I'm trying to figure, I, I...
One, one meeting is half a day on Friday and half a day on Saturday, most are a full day on Friday, and depends on Saturday.
I think I'd be like, well...
So, 16 hours maybe?
The time that I'm...
Go to sleep, you're not billing for any of that.
The time that I'm at the conference.
So, I think we're talking about around in the $10,000 range, is what we're, we're asking of, is about, there about, it sounds like, in, in what we're talking. Here's the, the challenge though, that I think that, that we are under. We can say, don't go to them, or we're not going to pay for them to do it, but if we do that, that also means there's no guarantee that we're having somebody that's, that's getting that level of service. I always was under the impression that was how we ensured to encourage that that training took place to protect this board.
And as board members, and we do have a conference of school members, we talk to people all over the state, and that's one reason we're always ahead of the game, we let all that go through our mind, we consolidate the other opinion, we're ahead of the game. Ginger, you're ahead.
I was just going to say Spike Fitzpatrick, God rest his soul. I, I didn't know Spike, I was busy teaching school, because I was busy teaching school. When I got on the board, oh my goodness, I came to love and appreciate Spike Fitzpatrick. I came to love and appreciate Spike Fitzpatrick. And one of the things that amazed me about him was that anybody in the state of Florida, not just Citrus County, could call him with a school board question, and he'd have to look it up. He'd just give them the answer over the phone, right then. And that comes from twenty-seven years of experience.
And Mr. Bradshaw, as a result of the work that he's done for this board, he's a ten years now experienced board member, I'm sorry, school board attorney board member. The issue that I think we also have is that the investment is... I know attorneys have said, and I think I've even heard Spike say, somebody say it of Spike at times, and I'm not saying Mr. Bradshaw would do this. But you can either have transparency of what you're paying your attorney, or you can find that there's gonna be a billable somewhere that takes place. So whether you think we're paying for it as we are right now, or whether you hire a different attorney someday, and they say, oh, I'm not gonna, I don't bill you, I'll include that, you can pretty much find that at the end of the day, when the billing's all done, somewhere in there, you pay for it. You will, what I'm saying is, is that you're gonna find that, that along the way, you're gonna pay it one way or the other. You're either gonna pay it because it's transparent, or you could find yourself having to pay it because the person is billed for things that maybe they wouldn't have billed otherwise.
So you're saying there's, there would be an unethical standard?
I'm not saying it's unethical, it's just another way of packaging it. It's not unethical. I can bill anyway, he doesn't tell me when he uses his people.
Sounds unethical to me. You're telling, you're saying that if it's not transparent upfront, then an attorney's gonna get it another way?
If it's not one that is part of a billable, then, no. But I'm saying absolutely, it's not that it's, it's not unethical. It's to say, I conclude doing all of this, and I'm not gonna charge you more. But I will tell you, every time this phone rings, I'm gonna pick it up and it's gonna start the clock. It means every time that I pick up a piece of paper, I'm gonna charge for it. There are other ways billables take place, particularly in legal and particularly in engineering.
And you know, you like, this reminded me, I did a interview with Ron Lando that I did, and he had a stopwatch on his desk, and you called, and started clicking, and it went off. And I don't care what your fault, you called out, because I come over and use it back when you're in your office, you're still gonna get billed for that. Every single thing is billed, that is the happiness. Let me ask you something. I know today when I decide on a contract, and it sounds like to me that all of us, days and times, agree on considering when the contract does come up, so we all understand. Does that work for you?
And that's fine, but what I will tell you is, the Florida School Board Association's information, as well as what we have found, I do not, I believe, without a shadow of a doubt, the data shows that in-house counsel will add a new layer of cost to this district. And it's not a risk that I believe that we should take.
Both you and I have had to research it. I researched years ago, came up with the same conclusion. Even though I wanted Mr. Bradshaw to be your full-time attorney, in an office, so I could just keep going, access him anytime. I found out whatever I wanted to do, that wasn't the case.
It sounds good until you look at the numbers and you're realistic. We have, I think, the best situation by having outside counsel. It allows our superintendent, as well as our attorney, to hire additional counsel as they see fit, that's in the best interest.
Additional counsel with additional expertise.
With additional expertise, and it's scalable. That's to me what our best scenario is. So I will tell you, when it comes to it, that's where I'm at. I think that it's always appropriate to have conversations about billing. But I also think that there are times where you've got to recognize that the billing does not always tell you an entire story. It may not tell you the number of cases involved. It may not tell you the number, the intensity of the case involved. It certainly doesn't say that just because that billable was done, there wasn't multiple other times where there wasn't billables done.
And my research several years ago had nothing to do with bills and to access, and that's what I, I wanted the answer to come out the way I wanted it, and it did come out the way I wanted it.
See, and I respectfully disagree. I think there is, there is a cost that we have to look at that we would be able to save money and have a full-time staff member, a full-time legal counsel in lieu of a part-time legal counsel at two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars an hour.
But you'd be saying we're to gamble on that when that's not even what the data shows. It's not what, we would be the smallest district, basically, to take on that risk.
Thomas, why don't we, well, don't you say, why don't we get some figures? But why don't you go get some figures that says, you know, the attorney, and then we're gonna have to have a secretary, we're gonna have to have a requirement for both of them.
You've gotta pay for the legal general.
And the district that I spoke to doesn't have an added secretary. So there's no added secretary.
What district?
Indian River.
Indian River.
But we, our board secretary...
Indian River represented by Suzanne DeGresso.
No, I'm sorry, Martin, Martin County, Martin County.
But we need those figures, we don't need to talk to you.
I looked at Indian River. I also looked at a smaller county in North Florida. This was it, DeSoto, DeSoto County? They had, they're not full-time, they have a contracted employee. But it was a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour was the hourly rate.
Martin's, in their, in this report, which was just done, Martin says that they do not have inside counsel, they use external counsel.
Well, if you have to report, what part of the counties have had in-house counsel?
The in-house counsel Flagler, which is twelve hundred, which is twelve hundred, I'm sorry, twelve thousand, that's the smallest. The next one that has inside counsel is Alachua with twenty-seven thousand students.
Well, but Alachua has, the superintendent has the attorney Brian Moore.
And that's what I was just gonna say, the difference is, that's right. They have two councils. And some larger, Clay County is the next largest, the next smallest. They have thirty-five thousand students, and they have it. And from there, it starts going almost back and forth as to where they have inside and outside. No one, though, that is between fourteen thousand and twenty-six thousand has inside counsel.
Guys, you and I...
Yeah, I, I have to...
And you can hit those stats and then bring them, bring them back. Because right now, I don't know how you feel, you know, Thomas and I...
I've been through this a couple, three times.
And what is your opinion? Or do you want to sit right now?
I'm happy with outside counsel.
So the three of us happy with outside counsel?
Are you happy with the contract?
I'm not sure about that.
No, we're, and I was gonna say, if there's some changes in the contract and we pass that, so we can focus on some changes. Just hoping to get the figures to be able to deal with it.
Yeah, well, I mean, and I would, I mean, I'm one board member. I'm expressing my concern over a large contract. It's not personal, I've already said that. It's a matter of being a good steward of our dollars in light of losing the half-cent sales tax, in light of decreasing revenues, in light of tightening our belt. What are some ways that we can do so? And there are some things in this contract I think we can do so, even if it means having a training rate for our attorney that's different from the two-hundred-dollar rate. You know, those are things that we can look at, the retainers.
Good points to look at, Mr. Dodd.
They are, but we have to realize, too, that what we're doing is reducing the level of service that we currently have.
I think we can stop it by not going to the...
But I'm, well, but then the question becomes is, is...
Know that being paid for, for an hour.
But it's still one way or the other. We have set the level of service. The contract is based on what this board has desired, not what Mr. Bradshaw has. So now, if you're saying that, does this board wanna set a different level? Then that may be a conversation.
No, I would just say we would reduce the training expenses into the retainer.
I understand. What you're wanting to do is negotiate a lower price. That's the bottom line. I mean, that's really what I've heard, is you either wanna have inside counsel to lower the cost, or you wanna just lower the cost of Mr. Bradshaw's contract. That seems to be really what we're talking about. And I'm saying, that can be done, but that is gonna come at a risk of reducing the level of service that you do. You can, you may wanna look at it as billables. I also look at it as a level of service that we pay him. And I have, I have respect and faith to know that at the end of the day, I believe that we are getting greater than the value that we're paying him. Now, whether that is because we're paying him the amount that's near ten thousand dollars for training in a year, but I get it other places, I get a greater increase in what, the value that he's costing us, I believe it equals out at the end of the day. And I don't think that we would be saving money, but costing us. That may be, at the end of the day, what we're doing is reducing the level of service.
I cannot see Mr. Bradshaw reducing his level of service to be, even at that per, because I know he's dead.
He's still a business, though.
Yeah.
He's still a business. So his time is, has some value. And we're saying in general that the value comes from an à la carte system. That seems to be what certainly the research points to. Part of that à la carte system is us setting a level of service. We can say to him, listen, we're gonna only pay for two trainings a year. That means we're gonna probably get two trainings a year. That's fine, if that's the level of service that we want. But that's what we are setting.
These are negotiables, not, I mean, not all contract attorneys get paid to go to a conference. Like I said, the Value Adjustment Board, he does his education training at his own expense.
But the Value Adjustment Board respectfully isn't the complexity of school board...
I'm just talking about attorneys, other attorneys that are contractual. If you hire an attorney, and you're paying for their expertise and their training that they have provided for themselves, by themselves.
Also, you're talking about specific attorneys that have school board experience. The complexity of a school board attorney is not like taking any general attorney. It is a very specific and knowledgeable path. And I will tell you, I mean, I can, I've been here six years, and the things that I know that Mr. Bradshaw's had to deal with are far exceed what a typical attorney would be faced with. So, you know...
Again, guys, I'm taking it, it's all today.
It's not, but, but the next time that we're supposedly meeting on it is when we are, are doing it.
But we can put the agenda earlier if we want to.
Again, but what more are we talking about unless, I mean, that's, that's a thing...
It's sort of clear that...
I mean, there's three of us that have said that we're staying, that we wanna stay with an in-house counsel.
About three of us say that. And the only, I think, matters, that one item of training.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dodd.
Maybe there's something else, yeah. Maybe there's something else, I don't know. But that can be brought up at the next meeting if so. But right now, we know clearly, three of us are good with what's happening. We're okay. And Mr. Dodd has a good idea then. He hasn't been through it like we've been through it before, so he doesn't have the scorched earth on his hands, you know, that we have. But I'm very...
So you're saying, obviously, the board feels like it's gonna be an out-of-house contractual agreement. But yet, the board is saying that there is room for negotiation in the contract. Is that what you're saying?
I think we're saying is that those concerns that you have right now, or are you concerned that we'll listen right now? You know, so the three of us are good with what's happening at this very moment with Mr. Bradshaw. But once again, what you have to say, and it might be strong chances that the board, well, I don't know.
Can I just ask one question of other board members, so I know. Is there, is there a point that it'll get to, cost-wise, that you will change your mind and...
For in-house counsel?
Right. What if, what if our bills, I mean, we're gonna continue to have legal issues? What if we're getting up a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
I think that the difference is, is your, your question is trying to set a dollar amount that determines it. But the dollar amount is reflective over the needs that you have in the district and the legal needs. There's gonna be years where we're gonna have higher legal needs than other years. I don't wanna set this level of, that we're required, that we're gonna have to pay when we may, when we're gonna have years where we're down here, we're gonna have years where we're up here.
I'm just trying to get a bit of workshop to bring this up again. October the twenty-fifth, let's bring it up again. Because, Thomas, you've gone plenty of times, you've done anything that wants to go wrong. I think it brings some ideas to us. Because all of us, I think, are over. We just know, as I said in the past, we have a big, big percentage from studying week after week of trying to do this.
We have departments that have had to largely shut down in order to reduce cost. And we have had to merge departments, is I guess a better way of saying it. I cannot see financially and service-wise why we would add a new layer of operation. No, absolutely, but I'm, but I'm saying, but that's what, that's what I think Mr. Dodd is asking, if there's a point that we would get to.
If it would save money, that's, that's correct.
If it would save money and keep the same level of service?
No, increase the level of service and save money.
I think that is your point.
I mean, I think all of us would be open to that, but there doesn't seem to be any data to support that.
And every, and years change. Remember the ninety-six thousand and something, because everyone was suing, suing to sue us?
Because you're also talking about saying you're gonna get an experienced attorney that's willing to work in-house, that you're gonna pay the benefits, that's gonna attract them, you're gonna pay the fees involved with them, you're gonna pay the ancillary costs with them. And what the experts are telling us is, that's just not gonna happen. And most of the districts aren't here.
And myself and Ginger, let's hold that to that workshop meeting. Let's hold everything, stop this session now, gather the information, whatever's in it.
October twenty-fifth.
October the twenty-fifth, and then we'll talk about it. And come to whatever decision we come to at that time.
You're here.
And with that, we're adjourned.
No, we did it before you were gone.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna...
That was a good remember.